They're working on an agenda.
No, no, she gave up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Well, ladies and gentlemen, there are our ladies. My name is Lucy Bisson and I'm the chairperson of the planning board. I welcome you this evening and I call this meeting to order and I would ask Christine Kittredge to call the roll, please.
Roger Dupree.
Here.
Joshua Najin.
He's here.
Michael Marcot.
Present.
Shanna Cox.
Here.
Lucy Bisson.
Here.
Myself, Christine Kittredge, Amy Smith.
Here.
And Alexander Pine.
Here.
Thank you, Christine. And as for the record, we have David Hediger, Director of Planning and Code Enforcement. We have Shelley Norton, Deputy Director, City Planner, and Linda Tripp, the Administrative Assistant. Okay, and so there will be adjustments to the agenda. Because there is, doesn't appear to be anyone here, we are going to do other business before public hearings, so that the two parties that are here can leave and we can do the rest of the stuff. So, any correspondence, Shelley?
No.
Okay, nothing? All right, in that case, we're going to start with other business. A planning board recommendation to city council on the acquisition of a portion of 490 Pleasant Street for the location of a fire station.
Okay.
This is Norton.
Okay. So, we're lucky enough to have Mike Karen, our fire chief, here in the audience, so my comments are going to be quite brief, because he's more familiar with us than I am. But you can see, I've pulled up on the screen there, 490 Pleasant Street, which is the current location for the Ramada. The city is proposing, and you have a map in your packet, purchasing the northern portion of that parcel where their parking lot ends, and building a new fire station at that location. The estimate is it would be a 2.1 acre parcel that would be divided off of that. We have information here as to what we think the value would be, so somewhere in the $285,000, $286,000 range, and the city is proposing to purchase it for $225,000. I think the best thing would be to ask the fire chief to provide a little more information at this time.
Absolutely. Yes, fire chief, if you would introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening, I'm Mike Karen, I'm Lisbon Fire Chief. This parcel was, in 2009, the city contracted for a fire station location study with Policy One out of Scarborough, and it was recommended that the current Lisbon Street Fire Station be moved closer towards South Lewiston to minimize the response time. Even though it's sparsely populated, it's still part of the city and they deserve the same kind of fire protection as everybody else. So, they recommended moving that current station to actually this intersection. And now, yeah, I don't know how to believe. And then also building another fire station in South Lewiston, which may be a future project. Not at this time. So, the city has embarked on a program to replace the three substations that we have. Sabata Street was replaced a few years ago. The Main Street Fire Station is going to be relocated to just off Molleson Way, and I think that project is going out to bid. It's currently out to bid now.
Oh, good.
And then, we wanted to obtain a parcel for the next fire station, the Lisbon Street Fire Station, Station Number Three, and this parcel became available. It's well-suited, it puts us closer to South Lewiston, it's a quick response to the Turnpike, as well as access to Lisbon Street and over to Sabata Street as well. So, I think it's a good location. We were able to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement with the owner for that grassy area, which is approximately 2.1 acres, for a reasonable price, I feel. It's contingent on some other issues, because we did receive a $1 million Congressional earmark to put towards the project, so it is subject to some HUD regulations as part of that. It has to pass an environmental review, and it has to be approved by HUD. We are, that process is underway, the purchase and sale agreement is contingent on it passing. It also has to have approval from the main DOT for a curb cut, because it's a restricted access highway, that portion of the road, which early indication is that it's not going to be a problem, and think that they're going to approve it. So, it's a good location, I'm just seeking approval to move forward with the purchase of this parcel.
Okay, thank you. Does any, I think it's a great, it's a great location myself. You know, you've got the, you've got the distillery there, that if you have a fire there, you'd be real close anyways.
It is a good location, and the price is right, because the other lots we were looking at were either, we would have to buy an existing structure and remove it, at, you know, the cost of, you know, several hundred thousand more dollars.
Yeah.
Than what this became available for. And this is a nice lot, it's dry, level and flat.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really, it's a good lot.
Good. Anyone have, Michael?
I have a series of questions. It's part of my neighborhood. When I saw the packet on Wednesday, I guess I wasn't even anticipating this as a possible location. And I do kind of like the location, as far as proximity to, you know, the neighborhoods in Wood Seven, Wood Six, even Wood Four. One of the questions I had, you'll be able to turn left or right coming out of the property?
I'm anticipating that, I don't, I don't see why there would be any restrictions on that.
And along those lines, I was wondering about, do you know what the measurements along the, I guess it's a perfect rectangle, probably the same in the front and the back and the two sides?
Well, we would have to have it surveyed, because it's part of an existing lot, but from the, from the city's GIS map, which is what this.
Well, I didn't go to the map, but I assume that it's up there, to the perimeter. That's ample size?
Yeah, 2.1 acres is ample size.
How's that compared to Main Street and Sabata Street?
So, the North Temple Lot is actually as much larger than that.
Is it like 10 acres or something like that?
I don't know the exact mentions, but I think there was some wetland implications there, as well as the city was going to build a park on it also. So, the fire station itself, just the building, is approximately 10,000 square feet. So, on, on a dry level lot, it would fit in one acre.
Oh, okay.
It would fit in one acre.
Yeah, with the, with the parking and the driveways.
And the able going all the way around.
One acre would be suitable if it was a dry level lot.
Hmm, okay.
And you said that this was dry and level.
Well, they're doing the wetland study now, but I've walked on the grounds and it's, it's, it's flat and dry.
Okay.
I was curious as to, what were the other locations?
Well, we looked all over the place, we looked across the street, directly across the street from there, which is a large lot, it was owned by Gendron, and he sold, further up, further north on that, towards Lexington, they had built, Webb had purchased some of it. And he wanted to sell us the wet portion that's not buildable, so it wasn't going to work for us. And then we, we identified a site on Westminster, but there was an existing single-family home there.
Okay.
But, you know, again, it would have been, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars more. We approached, I looked at the site down at the corner of, on Lisbon Street, the corner of Westminster and Lisbon, the vacant lot where by the Redemption Center and where they have the rental equipment.
Oh, yeah.
Would be, that would be the premium location, however, the owner is not interested in selling it, at any, apparently at any cost.
Yeah.
So, and on Lisbon Street itself, there's not a lot of available property. You know, there were some lots going further up Alfred Ploet Parkway, but we don't want to, I mean, it's, there's nothing there, and we don't want to be that far away from the population base, so, you know, if that was more commercial, commercially developed, it would maybe be okay, but.
I had once heard something about the corner of Alfred Ploet and Webster. Of course, the dry portion is a very small stamp, portion on that corner, then you get into the wetland.
Yeah, but that's, that's reserved, I believe, isn't it, David? Didn't we have to reserve that, or bank it for mediation, wetlands mediation?
Portions of it are, yeah.
Portions are, yeah, I remember that.
I think the corner itself, that once had a house on it, was also a gendered property, and that was discussed. The location is great for being able to get out into all the neighborhoods. Any of those locations really would have been. I was just wondering, will the truck be able to go up over Pleasant Street Hill, or would it have to use Lisbon Street to get to like, let's say, Shaw's supermarket?
So, with all of our emergency responses, we try to stick to commercial roads. We avoid residential neighborhoods. It's just, it's a bad practice, you know, it's a big truck traveling that, you know, potentially above the speed limit. So, we, currently, I mean, the stations are very well-located in their, you know, on Sabata Street, Main Street, Lisbon Street, so those are the three major routes that, the arteries through the city. So, those are our, our main fire routes, you know, one responding to emergency calls, and then, you know, when they get to close proximity, you know, they'll have to turn off at some point and drive through residential neighborhood, but.
Well, I suspect if they were responding to areas in the firewall street area, they're going to be using Webster Street. If they're looking to help in the inner city, they're going to be coming completely down Webster Street.
Yeah, they will have to drive through residential neighborhoods, I mean, but.
I was just curious about the hill, because of the hill.
Well, you know, it's winter and it's Maine, so, you know, I mean, you just never know, I mean, they have to.
Winter and waiting for winter.
You know, I mean, the central units have to come up Bleachery Hill to, you know, to respond to Shaw's as well, so, it's just, it's part of living in Maine.
Well, I just use Shaw's as an example of a destination, because I was just curious if something was happening, let's say, in, on Bobby Street, off of Stevens Street. Would they use Pleasant Street Hill? Would they use Lisbon Street or Webster Street to get there, as opposed to Pleasant Street?
Lisbon Street is the faster route. It's just, it's a wider road, you know, even though you might think Pleasant Street is a more direct shot, and it is, I mean, traffic moves slower, and it's more hilly, I mean, Lisbon Street would be the better route. And, and we always encourage that, that is our policy, that we stick to the main, the main routes responding. I know with the new Main Street Fire Station, that's not going to be on Main Street anymore, that they're not going to be coming down College Street. When they come out, when they leave, come out of Molleson Way, they're going to be taking a left, not a right.
A left, okay.
Because we want them to use Main Street to come downtown, not College Street, because College Street is a residential neighborhood.
So, if they're going downtown, it'd be Main Street. But if they were, if they were going to Hogan Road, let's say.
Well, obviously, then they would have to take a right, because you just can't get to Hogan Road from.
Well, you could, but it'd take a little longer.
Right, so, I mean, it is, you know, with anything, you know, there are general guidelines, because I, you know, there's just so many variables and I can't have a policy for every circumstance. So, we expect people to exercise good judgment.
And probably more of a question for Dave, but I'm just curious, is this the least expensive property purchase out of the three?
I don't know.
I mean, when I saw 225, I was, feeling I got was, it's probably the least expensive.
I think we, Mark might correct me, but I think we paid more for Molleson Way, didn't we?
No, I'm sorry, so, for the Molleson Way, I believe we paid 160.
Really?
However, however, we had to build a road at a cost of $350,000 to get to it.
Yeah, so, so that kind of offsets the savings, yeah.
Because I remember the struggle on Sabata Street, I just quite didn't remember Molleson Way.
Shanna?
I really appreciate you looking and doing your due diligence and not landing on taking a commercial property or housing out of our limited inventory for both, so thank you, this feels like a really reasonable price, and I think increases access to Grove Street and some of the neighborhoods out there while maintaining access to Lisbon, it's a great find.
Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions? Yes, Josh?
And I believe you somewhat covered this, but you're comfortable with the response times for the area that this is going to be serviced, full weather location is.
Yeah, so, the district that that covers, the fire district number three, so, I mean, I could supply you with a map of the district, but, so, it's all of South Lewiston, it's all the way to the Lisbon line, and it goes as far, well, if that's true north on that map, then I say it would go as far west as East Avenue is their district. So, where they are now, in the corner of Albert, is very, if you consider how large the district is in its entirety, they're very, they're very not centrally located, they're very close to the western edge, however, that is the population, they're centrally located in the population base, but not geographically. So, even though South Lewiston may not be that populated, they still want a quick response when they have an emergency, so we need to move closer, we need to bridge that gap a little bit, and this location will help.
Okay. Yes, Michael?
How many bays?
Well, we're anticipating, I mean, obviously, it hasn't been designed yet, but, so, I am anticipating that this station will be substantially similar to the one that we're going to build on Molleson Way, so it will be two bays with some storage, some ground-level storage. The one on North Temple is, is a full three bays, but it has very little ground-level storage, it has some storage on the mezzanine, so, I mean, once you put the lawnmower, the snow blower, and, you know, some shovels and trashcans in there, I mean, the storage room is, is full.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so, and plus, over there, we have, you know, the Cobra Team Equipment, their truck, which is the Regional Hazardous Terrors Response Team, so we store some equipment for them, which takes up a full bay, it's a very large vehicle. So, we scaled it down for the Main Street Station, so we have two full bays, but that third bay is not going to be a drive-through bay, it's just going to be ground-level storage, so it'll have a lower roof, which the department as a whole is really lacking. Even Central Station is a large building, but there's essentially almost no storage there, it's just a big garage.
Still can be a ladder truck.
At Central. Oh, three, yeah, so we're not buying a new truck, that truck is a 2019, so that will hopefully still be here after I'm gone.
What I'm wondering about is, in that area, we have a lot of the industry, a lot of the.
Yeah, so.
Gendering park spaces.
So, that truck, because, so, some history of the LFD, when I started on the fire department in 96, that was just a straight engine. There was no, now it's a quint, it's a combination engine-ladder. And that was specifically purchased in 1997, because at that time, Alfred Ploet Parkway and in the area of the Turnpike was, you know, slated for heavy retail development, and that business park was going to expand, and some of that just never materialized. But that was the whole idea behind buying that piece of equipment for that district.
But it could still materialize.
Hopefully someday.
Just looking at planning for the future, I, I never knew that there was also a recommendation for an additional station further out to serve rural South Lewiston.
There was, I mean, it's never been acted on, I mean, obviously, it would come at a substantial cost, so we just have not got to that point yet, but.
I guess if there was more housing development out there, if there was more industrial expansion closer in, that would create the need.
Potentially, I mean, obviously, everything is, you know, I mean, what the council wishes, I mean, if they wish, you know, if they were, you know, wished to fund something like that, then that would be there at the discussion.
Josh?
The only other thing, so, for the plan of following the Molleson Way footprint, that basically leaves about half the lot undeveloped, so it could be expanded into at some point?
Yeah, so, depending on the engineering and design, wherever they place the building, there will be some undeveloped land. 2.1 acres is ample for that.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Amy?
I just had one question on the, the price. So, it says that the current assessed value of the 9.33 acres is 604.8, and this is 2.1 acres, and it says, so, I get 64.8 per acre, which would be 136, so I'm just curious about.
I, I really didn't have any involvement in coming up with the value. I don't know if Shelley could provide some insight on that.
I did that math, I can check it for you, so, yeah, so I was saying that 2.1 acres would be roughly that, but I might have done it wrong.
I was just curious, because it looked, I come out at 64.8 an acre, if you divide the purchase price by 9.33. And I don't know what the market, that's the assessed value, which is different from the market value, but it was in here as a rationale.
It was not really a rationale, it was more just provided because the board typically has an interest in knowing that.
I see if the math was right. That blew right by me.
All right, okay, okay. All right, any further questions? Okay, and this is not a public meeting, so I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion pursuant to Article 7, Section 4H of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the city council for the acquisition of a portion of 490 Pleasant Street, including if any specific conditions raised by the planning board.
Okay, do I have a second? Roger? Any further discussion? I'll call the roll, Roger Dupree.
Yes.
Joshua Najin.
Yes.
Michael Marcot.
Yes.
Shanna Cox.
Yes.
Christine Kittredge.
Yes.
Amy Smith.
Yes.
Alex Pine.
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. All right. Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Alex is a bonus.
I don't think I'm a, I'm a voting member tonight, but.
Oh, that's right.
I just chimed in just to key form.
I like being inclusive, though, it's great. Can I ask a clarifying question before we move on?
Sure.
Just, the motion as stated and as provided in our packets was including if any specific conditions, and just for the record, there weren't any, right? Okay.
Okay. All right, other business, the second item is a discussion about a potential contract zone at 43 and 51 North Lisbon Road for an industrial use. Shelley?
Okay, so, this evening you have a request for just an informal meeting with you to discuss the possibility of coming forward with a contract zone for two parcels that are adjacent to each other. 43 and 51 North Lisbon Road, if you're looking at the map on the screen, it's these two parcels here, there's existing buildings on those parcels. So, the purpose of this is for Bourgeois Guitars, which is currently in the hill mill in downtown on Chestnut Street, to move and expand into a bigger space for their musical instrument business. They are also looking to expand what type of business they do. So, currently, these two parcels are zoned such that they can, would be able to move in and do their light manufacturing of the musical instruments, but they are looking to actually mill some of the wood that they use and also sell that wood to others. So, the milling of the wood would really fit under the industrial use, which is not allowed at these two parcels. So, that's what they're looking to discuss with you this evening, is the possibility of contract zoning those two parcels to allow either a group of industrial uses tailored to what they want, or, you know, with probably some wiggle room there in case they had a tenant or wanted to sell at some point, so, a suite of industrial uses. And then, really have the board discuss with them if you have any concerns, reservations, things you would want to see in that contract zone to make this possible. So, that's really the discussion this evening, and then they would come forward probably in January with the actual contract zone language for public hearing and for action to send to the, to the council. So, this evening, tonight, you have, here this evening, we have Brian Doyle from our Economic Development Department, Lingan Jeffers also from Economic Development, and then the president of Bourgeois Guitar, Chris Fleming, so, they are here to have discussion with you, yes.
Yeah. Can you pull up the zoning layers for the associated parcels that abut this neighborhood? I don't know if it's possible for you to zoom out just a smidge, not too much, yeah, that's great, thank you very much.
Yeah, and I guess that is something I did, we could also, while I'm looking at the map, I'm sitting here, just point out that behind these two parcels, there is a property that has two living units, so there's a two-unit behind them, and then adjacent, there are also dwelling units, there's a three-unit dwelling, and then I think this.
I'm also interested in the uses of the properties.
And then, and then that's a two-unit there, and then across the street, there.
There is a fence.
Yes, exactly, so.
I know, because they fix my fence regularly.
We've got them listed as a lumberyard, supply yard, but, yep.
I believe that single-family home is owned by a gentleman known as Riz, one of the high-end posts.
This one here, the two-unit, it's listed differently, but it may be the same, it may, may be the same ownership. Shanna, did you have somewhere specific you wanted to look?
I mean, you covered most of it, can you just hit me with the two parallel buildings?
There's our storage units.
Storage units.
Oh, over here.
I am, while appreciative of all of the descriptions of current use, I am most interested in the current zone for each.
Right.
Yep, so that is self-storage units.
So, is it all highway business? I see the HB.
It is all highway business throughout here, yes. Yep, until you get to the main road.
I'm sure it's in one of the charts with us tonight, but does highway business include light industrial?
It does, yes, so the, well, light manufacturing, rather. Is it manufacturing or industrial?
Light industrial.
Oh, light industrial, okay.
And thus is the crux of tonight's conversation, right?
It doesn't include industrial, which is what they would need for the wood milling, but the light industrial isn't allowed to use. So, if they only wanted to do what they do right now, and for their business, they could, so.
Okay, so, which zone would we have to conditionally zone it to, to allow them to do the milling?
So, the last contract zone you did didn't actually end up with an underlying zoning, it was just the contract zone. So, what you could, what could happen here is that it could essentially be all the uses that are allowed right now, plus additional uses that you would put into the contracts, that they would write into the contract zone. So, it could be broad, it could just be industrial, which, I don't know if you want another asphalt plant here, like, you probably want to tailor it a little bit, but still provide some flexibility for, for them in the future, or for a future purchaser if they ever chose to sell the property. So, there's probably a sweet spot there with industrial uses to allow them to move forward, but also not open it up to all uses.
Okay, all right. I will ask Mr. Doyle and Mr. Fleming to come up.
Hey, we're getting a concert.
I was going to say, I wouldn't mind a demonstration. We don't often get them here.
No.
That's what happens when you give your eight-year-old your iPad.
Ah, yes, yes.
I found this on the web.
For tonight's entertainment, I thought you were going to have a guitar concert. Well, thank you guys for having me here tonight.
Okay, can you identify yourself just for the record?
For the record, my name is Christopher Fleming, and I'm the president of Bourgeois Guitars. For the record, my name is Christopher Fleming and I'm the president of Bourgeois Guitars.
Thank you.
I'd like to open by saying I was up till the wee hours last night writing a veritable tome of beautiful prose for all of you. And, and Brian cautioned me and, and said, well, they'd probably appreciate some brevity rather than making you suffer through all of that. So I'll spare you that. I'll just speak extemporaneously and kind of try to paint the picture for you a little bit. So if you're not familiar with our company, Bourgeois Guitars has operated in Lewiston for over three decades in one form or another. Dana Bourgeois started building guitars in nineteen seventy four in Maine and has made quite a name for himself. We currently build about four hundred and fifty high-end custom acoustic guitars a year. These are all hand-built instruments and we serve the top five percent of the market. So we're, you know, this, this guitar here comes in just over thirty thousand dollars. It's, it's a pretty rarefied group of customers that we work with. But apparently there's a lot of those folks who can spend thirty thousand dollars on a guitar out there because we're backordered for the next two years.
Wow.
And we've, for the last, gosh, twenty-five years, we've been working out of sort of ad hoc leased spaces. And we're, we're ready to take the next step. We're, we're at and have been at capacity at our current location in the Roy Hill Mill for some time now. And we've just found ourselves at sort of this inflection point where we have this window of opportunity. We've been looking for three years for an appropriate site. We want to stay in Lewiston. That, that name has come to be synonymous with the brand and Dana himself is, is really invested in this community. But we found two candidate sites. One is in Auburn. It's a seven acre parcel on Old Danville Road. And then there's this property that we're looking at right here. The economics of the Auburn parcel are advantageous on a per acre basis. We're, we're at about a third of the cost of, of what this would be. This is also a gendered property currently. However, we've managed to convince our investors that there is, though intangible, there, there is real value in, in remaining in Lewiston. So we've been, we've been fighting the good fight and I think we've got them on board. I think they're ready to move forward. I don't know how long they're gonna remain ready to move forward, so I wanted to just get in front of you and sort of feel out what, what we might be looking at in terms of, you know, how, how steep the climb would be to get over this hurdle for this particular lot. And so I did want to, I brought plenty of props here, but when we talk about industrial use, you guys probably have a very different picture in your mind than I do, but I think smoke stacks and old black and white movies and. But of all the props I brought, I think perhaps these two are the most illustrative. Anybody tell me what the difference between these two pieces of wood are, just out of curiosity?
One's milled and one's not.
Yeah.
That one's not.
This is industrial. This is light industrial. This is a raw material. This is a processed material. So when we talk about the impact, from my perspective, although granted, this is a reductionist standpoint, I understand. But from my perspective, the saw doesn't make any more noise cutting this piece of wood than it does cutting this piece of wood. And in my estimation, the mill is, first of all, it's a boutique mill, so we're not talking about a huge operation. We're talking about maybe four logs a week, that type of thing. It's going to be an entirely indoor operation and it's going to be utilizing electric drive motors only on our saws. These are two-twenty, three-phase bandsaws, that type of thing. Really not much more than the equipment we have in our shop now. So I don't anticipate there being any greater impact to the community as a function of the operations at the mill than there would be for the permissible uses in the guitar factory. So those are just some, some considerations. I think that this is an ideal site for us. I think it would work really well. You see, there's already a building on, I think that's, I think that's forty three North Lisbon, the one on our right. That's a seven thousand square foot building, which is exactly the footprint we've designed for the mill. And it would need minimum, minimal retrofitting for our purposes. The, and part of the time sensitivity is due to the nature of the harvesting season for red spruce, which starts in the winter. The reason for that is that spruce spoils very quickly in the summertime. So unless you can get a log from the stump to the kiln in short order, it starts to leach tannins and stain, bugs get into it, fungus mold, all that type of stuff. So my hope is that we can get over this hurdle quickly enough to take advantage of the cutting season this year. But that dream is getting farther away every day. So I'm, I'm just painting in really broad strokes now. I'd, I'd be happy to send everyone. The, the other thing about this particular project, and I'll just briefly go over it. I've been working with Congressman Golden, Governor Mills, the USDA, the United States Forest Service, National Association of Loggers, along with a huge network of private and public land interests in the state on this particular project. And it revolve, it revolves around the value that the tonewood industry is what we call logs that are used to manufacture musical instruments. The tonewood industry as a whole can offer to the main forest product sector. And the thing about all these pieces of wood here, I'll pass some of this around. It might be interesting. So this is Pisia Rubens is what it's called. That's, that's actually maple, but that's local Maine maple. This is all Pisia Rubens, red spruce. And something that most people don't know about red spruce, you're gonna have to cut me off at a certain point because once I start talking about wood, it's painful for everybody, is that it's the very same species that Antonio Stradivari used in building his violins. And current uses for Stradivarius wood include pulp, toothpicks for China, two-by-fours. And I think that our upstream partners or suppliers or loggers or mills are suffering because of that. And the model has been proven in the Pacific Northwest where clear-cutting practices have received, obviously, I think deserved poor publicity. And some friends of ours in the tonewood industry have gone out there and, and shown them that, you know, if you, if you educate the landowners on what makes a good tonewood log, they can cut one out of ten, cut their overhead by ninety percent and their top line doesn't change, right? I'll pay ten thousand dollars for that one thousand dollar log, that type of thing. And that's a potential that we have to offer, I think, our, our upstream partners in the forest product sector. The problem we're facing now is that there are two suppliers in the country that provide red spruce products to musical instrument manufacturers. And if you want to take a guess at where they're located, you'd be wrong. I'll just stop there. They're, they're fifteen hundred miles from the closest spruce tree. So a board foot of red spruce costs about a dollar seventy-five, something like that is market rate. A guitar top, what we were just passing around, is about a third of a board foot. Talking about sixty cents worth of wood. I'm gonna give everyone one shot at this. How much do you think I pay for that wood once it's been shipped out to Indiana and processed and sold back to us as a guitar top? For that sixty cents worth of wood, what do you think we pay?
Couple hundred.
Five of those.
Yeah.
Five hundred dollars for sixty cents worth of wood that comes from a tree I can see out of my window. And that's the problem, right? The other problem inherent in that is the only logs that work for those suppliers are the biggest, oldest, most beautiful examples because they have to count on the fact that they're gonna lose thirty percent of that to rot and mold and fungus by the time they get it out there. So it's a gross waste of Maine's natural resources. And our cost structure by being located at the source is such that, A, we've already established a network, as I said, of landowners and foresters who we've promised a hundred and fifty percent of market to for their logs. We've already started working with them and educating them. And B, we can pay almost two times the market rate for these logs and still undercut the current retail market by thirty percent because we're here.
Right.
And by the way, all that revenue stays in Maine, right?
Yeah.
So that's why this has received such robust support, I think, by all of our representatives. Fame, Finance Authority of Maine, just grant, awarded us the full half million dollar Phase Two Thrive loan, forgivable loan, in order for us to buy the equipment. We need to start the mill. We've already got the team assembled anyway. So we're in a plug-and-play position and our investors are ready to go. So we just need the site.
Alex, you had your hand up?
Told you you were gonna have to cut me off. I apologize.
No, no, that's fine. No problem. Thanks for bringing the props. It was a lot of fun to take a look at that. Just thinking about this for the rest of the board, it seems like, you know, the big question here is, is impact, right? So site, smell, noise, things like that. In, in reading your letter here, it seems like the primary goal is to create raw material for this, this finished good that you're, you're building here in town. And so in a lot of ways, the processing of the logs is more accessory to the primary use of the site. And my guess, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, is that really the, the intent behind sort of industrial being for, you know, transforming raw natural resources into something more finished is, you know, avoiding a large lumber mill, you know, with hundreds and thousands of logs in the yard and things like that, where this is really more, you know, this isn't a, you know, if you were to put this in food terms, this isn't, you know, a blueberry freezing factory that's doing truckloads of blueberries. This is a blueberry jam factory that is getting the best blueberries to turn into artisanal jam. And so to me, it seems like under sort of the spirit of what we're trying to do, yeah, this is accessory to what's already happening and the zoning is appropriate for what's already happening. And like you were saying, we're talking three, four logs over, you know, a pretty long period of time, so, you know.
We estimate about four logs a week.
Four logs a week, yeah. So, you know, it's less, less than a truckload a week. So in, in looking at the current use of the property, it's rock screening equipment.
Yeah, these were, and, and when we, again, going back to the idea of, you know, impact to the community, I mean, these guys are firing up huge diesel gravel crushers and stuff like that to test equipment. I've gotta assume that we're, we're gonna be making less of a dent in terms of noise pollution and everything else than these guys would and, and that's a permissible use.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not a voting member tonight, but this seems like a good idea to me.
Sure. Shannon?
Thank you. I'd love to see you stay in Lewiston and I, I won't speak on behalf of the board, but if we were to do a straw poll of how do we make this work, I would hazard a guess that we're in that general vicinity. So in terms of your actual purpose for coming here tonight, I think it would be to craft a request with staff around language for a contract zone that would allow for the uses at the scale that you've described. And I appreciate the desire to see some flexibility and some, some ability to grow in the future. I would name that for you to be nimble and successful, first run, which I would love for you and your investors to have, that I would be really thoughtful about how flexible, because I think some of what has hung me up in this board on occasion is when we look at a contract zone, we ask questions and twice tonight you've referenced that even if the property changed hands, the contract zone would be there and its future use. And I think the ability to say we can certainly comprehend what you are proposing and would love to see you do so and do so quickly and successfully and how that is different from a future unnamed potential use and what scale that could be. I think, I think right sizing the contract zone to avoid those questions about future use and its growth, though that was what was insinuated a couple of times tonight, I think that's where the hangup would come. And so don't include that language and allow for enough flexibility for you to grow this current operation and stay here for generations to come without worrying about a change of use or a future owner. That'd be my recommendation and how I would handle a contract request when it comes before the board.
Josh?
I just have a few questions concerning just the process. So when you're considering moving to the new location, what would typically be your hours of operation? That would be one thing I would be interested in knowing.
Yeah, well, you know, our, our current shop is open from eight in the morning until five-thirty every day. I would assume we'd operate on similar hours. Monday through Friday. I'm sorry, by every day, I mean, Monday through Friday, yeah. Forty hours a week. We, we offer, I think, fifty-two hours a week to our employees.
The next question would be, would you ever consider being in a situation where, you named the industry. Would you ever consider milling to outsource any of those products?
Yeah, I think, I think we would, absolutely. I mean, so right now, our primary.
Would that require, and would that require some type of scaling up or do you think that like four, four logs a, a week would cover that?
That's a good question. So our, our projection of four logs a week, it's a hundred and ninety-two logs a year, is exactly, it's, it's serendipitous, but that is what we estimate right now as being pulled out of the state to the suppliers in the Midwest. So we know that much wood is here, right? We want to catch that net upstream and catch that material before it heads out of the state. It also happens to be the exact volume that we in our parent company would consume in a year. So Eastman is the largest, that's where this came from, the largest manufacturer of stringed musical instruments in the world. They build something like ten thousand violins a year. So I think we're gonna have our hands full for the first couple of years just supplying ourselves. There's a lot to learn. We're cutting our teeth. We're gonna make mistakes. So it's gonna take some time. But I would, I would like to assume that because we can sell the same product for, you know, thirty percent less than a competitor, that we would retain the right to be able to take on a retail arm of the business at some point in the future. I, I would think to the benefit of, of everyone involved in the industry, but, but yeah, so there, there obviously would be some scaling. But our primary objective and I think what we could accomplish in this facility at seven thousand square feet is, is pretty close to what we're projecting right now.
I, I'm involved with a, with a land trust that operates in Andruscoggin County. And one of the things that has become clear over a period of time is that logging for veneers, for instance, makes a lot more sense than actually cutting for pulp. And so as far as an environmental application is concerned, obviously selective cutting is, is preferred over taking down chunks of the woods. So I like that. And I guess the one last question I have is, are there any caustic or noxious chemicals that, that are involved in the industrial use versus the light industrial use? So basically, it's just the milling of the wood, correct?
It's just the milling of the wood. I think the differentiator is whether we're, whether or not we're adding value to what, what is, what you would define as a raw material. Right? So this is, you know, oftentimes, this is the five hundred dollar piece of wood we buy back, right? That's not a raw material anymore. It's processed. So no, there's no difference.
Okay. Anyone else have any? Michael?
When I saw the agenda item, I took a quick read, my first thought was, why can't we have like five of these in my every meeting? And along that note, I'd love to fast-track this. It's possible that in two weeks, we could have a contract zone written out?
That's what Shelley and I were just talking about, how to, we might need to ask you guys to schedule a special meeting in order to get deadlines.
The faster, the faster.
I think that would be, I, I, you know, I think this is a fantastic use of, of that property. We would love, you know, we really want you to stay in Lewiston and not go to Auburn. I mean, they're nice, but.
Anywhere else.
Anyway.
And just anywhere else.
Anywhere else, yeah. But, so yeah, I think if, if we can schedule a special meeting to get, you know, and if you work with, with Brian and, and the other staff members to get the, the language, like Shannon mentioned, you know, let, let's get the language for what they want to do now and maybe a little bit more, but not have to worry about, well, what if they sell and, and what if, let's, let's get the language for what they need now and, and, and let's, let's get it done so that they can, they can not miss this, this cutting season.
I, I agree with everything the chair just said. I'm just curious, you are buying the property, you're not leasing?
No, we, we'd be buying it, yeah, which, that's a challenge on its own. It's shaped gender and is involved right now.
What happens with everything that's on the property right now?
All of that's gone. These tenants have vacated the property.
Right, just the building.
So that's already gone. It's not there today.
Yep. Yeah.
The trucks and such.
Right.
And, and I will just make a comment pursuant to your, to your observation, Alex, about the accessory use sort of of, of the sawmill, and working with Eric Cousins and, and the planning and zoning folks over in Auburn on that parcel we're looking at, that's exactly what, what he recommended, was that, hey, we can do this. The, the odd part is that what you would think as the, the core component of the new campus, which is the guitar manufacturing facility, is coming after the mill, as long as we can present this as an accessory to the initial, then it falls within the parameters of highway business and light industrial use anyway. So, that was a good observation, anyway. I'm not sure if that's, that's a potential road to take, but I, I wanna thank you guys for your support, anyway.
Oh, absolutely.
I really appreciate that.
Yeah, so, I would recommend to staff that they speak with Mr. Fleming here and, and get, get, you know, get it fast-tracked, get it before the end of the year, because we really want, want this to go. And we don't need a motion or anything, do we, for this?
No, at this point, no.
This was just a discussion, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Yes.
How special is it? I still have the eleventh on my calendar.
Yeah, we have the eleventh.
Yes. Would it need to come before then? Could it fit in? Is it a special meeting?
No, it would have
Is it a regularly scheduled meeting and would just be moving it into December, not January?
So, we, we would have to write the contract zone, it needs to be posted in City Hall thirteen days in advance, we have to get neighbor notices out seven days in advance, and we have to have a legal ad placed this Friday.
All right, well, so maybe not the eleventh one after?
So, maybe the eighteenth.
So, maybe the eighteenth, okay.
So, we'll, staff will get together tomorrow
Okay.
and talk to the applicant, and we'll be back in touch with you.
Okay. Yeah, Christine.
We lose nothing from a council perspective necessarily, because even if it happened on the eleventh, I mean, maybe we could have a council meeting on the nineteenth, but we're gonna lose one week. Well, we're gonna gain time here
Right.
by having a special meeting
Right.
versus, because we can't hit the eleventh, and we're not gonna lose anything from a council perspective necessarily. We'll, we'll still hit two council meetings in, in January
Okay.
for your benefit, too. That's, that's the, the way that works, is you get a recommendation from the planning board, and then it's two meetings before the city council.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. Christine?
This is just a small question, but did you have any preliminary conversations with, like, these neighbors about just?
I, I have not, no.
Okay.
It's, it's certainly on my list, but I, I don't wanna go knocking on doors till I know that we've got, we've got a shot at
They'll get a notice to a butters.
I, I will say, in terms of making everybody's special meeting go smoothly, if you have a chance to reach out to the neighbors, explain really clearly, as you did here today, and help put some of their concerns to rest, it makes the process of getting the butters' notice less concerning, and it makes the rhetoric in the room during public comment more informed, which is beneficial to everybody.
Okay.
Right, and, and you only have a couple of residential
Right.
neighbors anyways. I mean, a rustic fence, I couldn't
Homemade cookies goes a long way.
Yes, Josh?
Who, who already exist in a, in a light industrial area?
Yeah, they already exist in, in that kind of a, of a place, so I can't see where they would be
They might not, they likely won't have super major concerns, but just having that personal
But it's nice to have that conversation.
Yeah, have the
Josh, were you saying something?
I was.
I don't think he was done.
No, I know.
No, I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to recognize that the quality of the guitars that you manufacture
Oh, thank you.
and your stringed instruments are
Heck, yeah.
of impeccable quality, and, and the name, you're right, is synonymous with Lewiston in many different ways. And it would be very exciting to, to continue the, the, the long tradition of you operating in the community, so.
Excellent. Well, we're, we're certainly invested in that outcome, so.
All right, so, you guys get together and, and hustle and get it back before us.
All right. So, I'm gonna just cue up the Rocky theme song for my exit.
Oh, okay.
Thank you guys very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Beautiful guitar. I'm not even getting up to get close to it, because I
I hesitate to touch it myself.
Oh, yeah. At that kinda price? Okay. All right, so, we're going to go to public hearings, and for the record, there is no public. So, I am not gonna open it up every single time to the public, we will just assume that I have a, unless someone comes in, and then I will open it up, because it's kind of stupid for me to say, open it up to the public, no public here, good, you know, okay? Is that acceptable to everyone? Okay. Okay. So, we have a number of ordinance text amendments and various things, articles, so what I would suggest is that we, Shelley, we, you give the description of one, we'll, we'll look at it, we'll discuss it, and then we'll vote on that one, and then we'll move on, because there's no sense in your rambling on all of them, and then we'll have to go back to it anyways.
Sounds good. All right, so the first article under consideration this evening is Article Two, which is definitions. And there are two definitions being proposed for, one to be added and one to be changed. The first is just adding affordable housing development, that's taken from the state language for the new housing bill and the rules that were established by DECD for that. So, defining it here allows us to talk about it in other articles later. And then, the second is automobile graveyard, and that definition is just being amended so that it aligns with the state definition, which just makes things smoother on our end for, for a number of things when people come to get approval from us for, you know, their state licensing.
Right, consistency of language is always a good idea, so, okay. Anybody on the board have any questions, comments on Article Two? Michael?
I'm just curious, what, what are the differences between the definitions, old and new?
Well, it shows it right, right in the article here, automobile graveyard, this is all in, in addition
What is the state definition you're asking? I mean, I can pull that up online.
She gave you one of those in, in today's
I wonder if the question is actually, do we currently have an affordable housing definition on record?
We don't.
No.
This is new.
I thought you were asking about automobile graveyard. Was it affordable housing?
Automobile graveyard is just changing the language so that it matches what the state's language is.
Well, I'm not gonna just
No.
give a blank check to the state.
It's meeting our field or other, you're meeting the definition
Meeting the definition of, and, no, where's the definition of, of the state's MRS?
Coming right up.
Thirty, A.
David, what is the median income right now?
That's a good question, Madra, I'm not sure.
There you go, Mike.
I might be able to tell you.
Michael?
So, it lets the Andersgoggin County that they use?
Yeah.
How does that differ with what we have?
I think all these exemptions that it doesn't include are not part of ours. And then we had, yeah, I think that's the main difference, probably.
And then we specified three or more unserviceable, unregistered, or uninspected.
So, comparatively, we would be more generous to use than the state's definition?
Yes. It also allows an area used for automobile dismantling, salvage, and recycling operations, so it's a little more specific and broad.
Then it also updated the reference to the state code, because it's referencing different sections.
Yes, that's true, it was actually referencing an older section, yep. And then, this isn't included, but the intent of staff is that we would be bringing changes to Chapter Twenty-two for our licensing to the council as well with this, and have that definition changed there. So, our definition on the zoning side, on the licensing side, would both match up with each other and would match up with the state.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, Shannon, starting the answer to the median income?
The, the Federal Bank of Boston estimates the median household income for Andersgoggin County in this current year as sixty-one thousand, four hundred and eleven. And it's not super clear, but I suspect that is for a traditional two-parent, two-child household.
Yeah, I was trying to look for a report, and I saw that number, and I keep not finding it.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions, comments? All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
Happy to make that motion. Should I add "as presented" to each one of these? Does that matter?
No.
I'd like to make a motion pursuant to Article Seven, Section Four, and Article Seventeen, Section Five of the Zoning and Land Use Code, to send a favorable recommendation to the city council for amendments to Appendix A, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Two, Definitions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Najee?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson? Yes. All right, Article Three.
The change to Article Three is essentially the addition of a growth area overlay district to the official zoning map, so that we can include that on our online GIS. The purpose of including this, so you'll recall that we had a workshop back in September with yourselves and the city council, and at that time, staff brought forward, from our comprehensive plan, there's a map with a number of growth districts, and we had identified, based on the descriptions, which ones we really felt would be part of the growth area, and had outlined those. And then there was a little bit of truth-checking with the, the members who were able to make it that night, as to whether there were any areas that didn't make sense anymore, you know, the plan was adopted in two thousand seventeen. So, we made a few adjustments. Since then, of course, there's been a number of zoning changes that have happened in the last year, year and a half, especially along the road corridors, along Main Street, Sabato Street, Lisbon Street, so we made a little bit of a tweak there as well. And so, this is what we're proposing as the current growth area overlay, and when we talk in Article Eleven about changes proposed there, you'll see that there's language that goes with this growth overlay district that describes how the new housing bill basically interfaces with this. So, there'll be two main ways. One is that the affordable housing bonus for density that the state adopted allows two and a half times the density in the zoning district in areas in your designated growth district. So, essentially, we need to designate a growth district. And then also allows vacant parcels in the designated growth district to allow up to four dwelling units. Now, in our case, most all of this area multifamily is allowed in, there is, it's gonna be limited where that four or more, up to four units would really be a trigger. But we, we needed a, a way to designate a growth area, so that's what we're doing here, and that's what we're proposing. So, that's what Article, the Article Three proposal is.
Okay. Joshua?
Is this the map of the growth overlay district? Is that what we're, are we approving the language here, or are we approving the map?
Just the map.
The map.
Essentially, the addition of this new map.
Okay.
Yep.
And it's the pink area.
So, I, I can't see a lot of, of, of some of the, the close-ups of the pink area, but it looks like in the Sunnyside neighborhood, the Urban Enterprise Zone was left alone, but so was the portion of Riverside Court and Cottage Street that's on the other side of, of Riverside Street, and very possibly my yard at seventy-six Riverside? Just to check on that.
Your yard?
Yeah.
Let's see if we can zoom in a bit better here.
Joshua's worried about his yard.
I am worried about it.
In the growth area.
Or is that, okay, so that's actually the Riverside Cemetery Saxton's building, is the, is that sectioned off-piece?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. So, what about Riverside Court and Cottage Street on the other side, just out of curiosity? Are you familiar with, like, the housing that already exists on Cottage Street?
I'm not, and I have to admit, this is pretty much pulled from the comp plan, so I can't always speak to the rationale. I looked at this and wondered, as far as like the, the Saxon property on the river, if that should be included. So, certainly, if the board would like to, you know, expand or change this map, we can absolutely make some tweaks to it for you.
The one thing I would point out with Cottage Street is that there, there are several single-family homes on, on quarter-to-half-acre plots back there, and then there are several four-to-eight-unit apartment buildings there as well, and they all kinda coexist together in, in some pretty healthy, I think, environments, so I, I would suggest extending that. And then also on Riverside Court, although it's all single-family homes currently, there is an opportunity, I think, at some point to possibly extend that Riverside Court further out.
Josh, could you physically
Yeah.
point it out on the map?
Sure.
Because I'm not exactly sure, I mean, I, I know the general area, but
So, Riverside Court is gonna be, it's a, it's a small half-street, it comes out of the public, the Republican Cemetery.
Yeah, it's those, those rectangular lots right there, right along that strip, yeah.
And then, this Cottage Street basically goes, where is Cottage Street?
On the other side of the tracks.
On the other side of the tracks. So, I think one side of Cottage Street, or actually, it looks like all of Cottage Streets.
No, it's all of that.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure that, that both Riverside Court and Cottage Street are included, is all.
I can pull up a map with street names, if that's helpful. Why don't we just look at that?
Sure.
Only because I think of everything that's in the Sunnyside neighborhood, with the exception of the Urban Enterprise areas that are already there, as pot, as potential growth zone.
Is there a specific address or street name that I should look up?
If you just look at Riverside Courts, so choose like, I don't know, two Riverside Court, probably. And so, it's not
No, they're Riverside Place.
Riverside Place, my apologies, it's called Riverside Place.
I think you're gonna find, though, Josh, CMP owns a lot of that property, and so I'm not sure how realistic it is. I mean, we don't know.
Directly behind that is actually the Riverside Cemetery Association properties, so
All right, there it is.
That's one piece. And then, of course, rezoning the, the AmeriGas would be fantastic in case, like, they ever decide to move out of my residential neighborhood.
Good luck with that.
That would be a great place for us.
So, you're thinking about this?
Yeah, Riverside Place, and if Cottage Street's already included, then we're good.
Cottages, yeah.
But you, do you see the size of those lots, of where, where you have, you know, several four and eight units, but then you also have, like, single families? And undeveloped lots.
So, you're looking at just expanding in that area there.
All right.
And I'd also wonder about the lots on the other side of Riverside Street from Riverside Place. I mean, you can just see them on the map here. Those are currently residential as well.
Sorry, Alex, could you point as well?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, right here, these are all residential buildings. And, I mean, I know they're in Urban Enterprise, but, you know, in terms of their current use and sort of how they fit in with the neighborhood, just blocking all of that out. Because, yeah, this is sort of odd in here, because there's a lot of, like, weird single-family mixed in with light industrial building, you know, a little warehouse stuff, which all would be great if it got developed into multifamily or whatever.
Do we want to include that whole UE slice right, right here?
Get all these little[1774.51]
Well, it's an overlay, so it's not, it's not like we're changing the zone.
Or not turning it, but...
But it's just...
Is there any benefit to that, though? Because I believe UE already allows multifamily, right?
May I ask a process question?
Yes, it does. Yeah.
You're, and I know Josh asked whether we're looking at the map or language, and I think you alluded to the map first and then language.
Hmm.
And so, it's maybe a both, but in an order that, I don't know, chicken or egg. But I guess fundamentally, what's the why? So, as I recall, a big piece of the growth area overlay district is our comp plan had used the term growth to say limited growth, restricted growth, but because it said growth, it made a particular clause in the housing bill and activated in all those spaces. So, I believe that the purpose of this is to get all of our language clear about where we want to see growth encouraged, and anything not in that overlay, like the low or restricted or other ways that we talked about growth, will have, I'm sure, language change so that the housing bill really only impacts that which is in the pink area. And so, to the extent that picking out parcels matter, to what end does this purpose serve? And what's the, I mean, what's the real potential? I would also acknowledge that we never used the term growth, knowing how they would apply it to a housing bill fifteen years later. So, there's that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, really, this was the way that staff, we wanted to keep our changes as simple as possible while still complying with the state law. And so, in situations, and it's just these two, with affordable housing density bonus and with a vacant parcel, that if you are in the designated growth district, you can have that density bonus for an affordable housing development. Or if it's a vacant parcel, you can build up to four units instead of like what you would normally be able to build. So, it's really those two scenarios. So, if something already has, you know, a two-unit on it, it's not a vacant parcel. You can't build up to four on it. If it's a small little poster stamp, no one's going to come in and do an affordable housing development there, probably because of the size of it. So, it'd really be aggregating parcels together or existing vacant parcels, or potentially a redevelopment, let's say something like, and I apologize that I don't remember the name of the property, but the property owned by Saxon on the river, if they decided that was going to be affordable housing, then they could get a density bonus potentially if they were in this area. That might be really significant. So, that's really where this becomes relevant. It also becomes relevant in the inverse, because there's language that says if you're not in the designated growth area and you have a vacant parcel, you can now build up to two units instead of like a single-family house. So, we really needed to define this area in some way, and as you stated, the comp plan wasn't specific enough for, you know, the city to really be able to just point to it and say, "We already did it." So, that's really the purpose here.
Okay. Thank you, Josh.
And just the one thing I'd like to throw out with this particular area, with anything that is currently NCBA, we've lost density in this neighborhood over sixty years, even when central distributors went in, that took out a bunch of housing. A lot of the housing in that area is older, some of it is very distressed. And so, I would encourage to consider pretty much anything within NCBA, within Sunnyside, to be a potential growth district. With the exception of obviously, the Saxon partner's been contract zone, the Saxon parcel has been contract zone, Saulterville, and Urban Enterprise, I think, has basically the same functions, so.
Okay, so, do we add that wedge or not?
Well, may I follow up on that?
Yeah.
Which is, please? The first part you said without the trailing part, which is to maybe pass this map with any NCBA in the Sunnyside neighborhood also being included, the really simple language that we could vote on?
Yep.
Okay, so, so, so there is going to be a change?
Yep, and is that direction clear enough for you, Shelley, if we offered it in a vote?
I think so. So, when we refer to the Sunnyside neighborhood, maybe let's just make sure that that's really clear. So, we're really talking about the area to the west of Main Street.
Correct.
And then, I guess, as far as houses go, so up to Riverside Place is like what we're talking about.
Right.
And we're bored by the bridge, Russell Street.
I think...
Because this is NCBA, but we don't really, we're not talking about any of this kind of open space, parkland.
In those cases, one of those is a city plot, Sunnyside Park, which has been looked at in the past as something to possibly develop for housing. And the other spot is currently in industrial use, but there's a paper road that ends at Winter Street that actually has access to that space. That used to be Thomas Shields' property, I forget who bought it, but that was also being considered for housing at one point in time. So, I mean, in all honesty, there's build-out opportunity in that neighborhood, which is adjacent to downtown, so.
And are those parcels currently NCBA?
Yep.
Yeah, so, if we say NCBA, west of Main Street and south of the Veterans Bridge.
Or we could just say, south of the cemetery property. I mean, I don't, we're not going to be...
So, we're going to include all of this land here, is what we're saying.
But anything that's NCBA, but it looks like RC is some of it.
That's all, if you guys want to, I mean, you can, but cemetery, no one's going to do it, you're not going to develop that area, right? You know?
Well, the thirty-four acres on the other side of the culvert, it cannot be used as a burial ground, so that...
Can't?
No. So, that property actually, and that's adjacent to Jetson Brook as well, so that property actually is, at some point in time, going to become something.
So, south of the cemetery or south of the bridge?
What parcel is that?
So...
South of the bridge, and the free market decides whether or not it's going to be above or below the cemetery?
Sure.
I think that makes no sense.
Yeah, let's do that. That'll be, that'll be quite broad and, okay. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to take a stab at it.
Sure.
Like to make a motion pursuant to Article VII, Section 4, and Article 17, Section 5 of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the City Council for amendments to Appendix A, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article III, official map with the amendments discussed tonight that reflect the growth overlay be extended to any NCBA-zoned parcels in the neighborhood bordered by the river, Main Street, and south of the Veterans Bridge.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Nagin?
Yes.
Michael Marcot?
No.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin?
Yes.
So, it's yes, six to one. Next, we have Article IV, the new overlay, oh, no, that is the, that's what we were doing, sorry. Article XI.
Uh, no.
Article IV, establishment of districts.
Okay.
There's just a few text changes to Article IV. It's very minor, so...
Oh, yeah, okay.
We just did the official map, but then the establishment of districts, there's a list of districts in there. Really, we just renamed the Neighborhood Business District prior this year, and we need to clean that up, and then we're adding the growth area overlay district to it.
Okay. Okay, that's pretty straightforward. Shannon?
So, this is our actual land use code. Does any of the language that we kind of need to get rid of, of districts that are named for growth, but like limited growth or low growth, that this is trying to address, is that only in the comp plan, or is it, okay, so we don't have to worry about kind of removing language? Great, thanks.
Okay, anybody else? In that case, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion pursuant to Article VII, Section 4, and Article 17, Section 5 of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the City Council for amendments to Appendix A, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article IV, establishment of districts.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Nagin?
Yes.
Michael Marcot?
No.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin?
Yes.
Six to one.
I'm sorry, Mike, okay, sorry.
Yeah, Michael, Michael objected.
You sort of...
Okay. Article XI.
Okay.
Space and bulk tables and...
Okay, so, um...
No, yeah.
Yeah, so Article XI, we have a couple of kind of top, I'm going to sort of speak topically for a minute, so, in the land use table, we've added the language that would restrict some types of development on the first floor of buildings on Canal Street, Lincoln Street, Lisbon Street, and Main Street, based on the figure that we had discussed with you last time that we've updated.
Bless you.
Bless you. And so, the language, at this point, it's all along Lisbon Street limits the first floor, but only dwelling spaces and only along the street, the, you know, back of the building could have dwelling units in it, the front of the building can have accessory uses to, that aren't the dwelling units themselves, lobby, gym, management office, common areas, that sort of thing. Similarly, for Canal Street...
There's an error in your, in number two.
Okay.
Okay, you're going, you're saying along Canal Street from Main Street to Cedar Street, but on the map, you're going to Maple Street, so which is it?
Maple.
If you look at the physical map on Canal Street, it goes, you have the red line on Maple Street, but you're only saying Cedar Street on this, so you either, you know, change one or the other. I think it's probably going to Maple Street. So, remove Cedar and put Maple.
I think we were thinking in our head Cedar Street, but I guess the board can advise us on whether you think that corner should be included.
Well, like I say, it doesn't matter. It's either or, you either remove the red on the map, or you change the language in the...
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so on Canal Street, it would be for a distance of a hundred feet on either side of the intersection, and then fifty feet going up a side street that would be impacted. And then, similarly, on Lincoln Street, same thing, Lincoln Street would be a hundred-foot length on either side of the intersection, and then fifty feet on the side streets. And then for Main Street, we did it a little differently and said, "All of the parcels along Main Street, but only fifty percent of that, of whatever building is facing the street would be limited in the dwelling units." So, thinking about some recent projects that we've had, you know, up on, oh, shoot, what was it, Three Lowell Street, and then the one across the street, something like that, where they, you know, wanted to have something other than the dwelling units on the first floor for part of the building. They could do their restaurant, they could do the gym, and so forth, and then, you know, less than fifty percent of the first floor would be dwelling units facing the street. So, that's what we're proposing for this. We have other proposals, but I'm thinking if we take these topically and discuss any questions about this before we move on, that would be great.
Okay, Alex?
I think we should adopt what's shown on the map, so including Maple Street for Canal Street. I think the consistency is good, and it sort of links better in with the intention on Lisbon Street.
With everything else.
Sort of same district.
Well, that's why I brought it up, because, you know, I noticed, I was looking at the map, and it said Maple, and so, on number two, I think you need to change from Main Street to Maple Street. Okay, just change that word. Okay, Josh?
I really hate to bring this up now, but I'm just wondering why Park Street wasn't considered down to City Hall as far as, you know, residentially. I know that the Oak Street housing complex exists, that's already there, but I'm just wondering with the new businesses that are opening and the, you know, kind of the focus to kind of create, I just consider Park as a supported artery for both Lisbon, like Lisbon Canal and Park all kind of function together. And so, I'm just curious as to why we didn't consider Park.
Yeah, it's a good question. I think the staff was trying to be mindful of not limiting things in too many places, but also focusing on areas that are the main kind of commercial corridor or the areas towards the riverfront, that we're trying to kind of pull people down from Lisbon Street to the riverfront and kind of back to Lisbon Street. But that would be a great discussion for the board to have, whether you want to consider that area.
We don't have to do it tonight, but, I mean, I just think about the enduring economic activity that happens along that corridor, and also the fact that like, you know, you think about where Chopsticks was, you know, like that's a developable space. When you think about the Oak Street parking garage, that's where people park in order to go down to Lisbon Street, and there's a large vacant lot that I believe the city owns that at some point in time will probably become something, and so, you know, it's just...
All right.
I think part of our concern, too, was, and this was voiced at that joint meeting, was, and with you folks, you know, we have a glut of office space now, and if we start requiring people to do office space, like, I think someone made the comment, like, some of this should be market-driven and seeing how that falls out. And that's not a bad way to look at it, but at the same time, we, staff's been concerned that along these major arterios like Lisbon Street, like Shelley said, we're going to end up with something that we don't want to see happen, we're going to get stuck with something, so.
Yeah.
I, you may be right, Josh, but I think I thought it's like, let's start with this and see if this even works, because this is somewhat re-territorial for us.
Yeah, if we look at what's on Park already, you know, we've already approved the development across from the park. Then we have the post office, which is probably not going anywhere anytime soon. And then, you know, there's already some precedent with ground-level residences with the big apartment block.
With Oak Park, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, you know, as someone who uses that parking garage, because my office is right there, the character of that street is such that like residential on the first floor isn't that bad, like it is sort of quiet and nice, and I do get that there is commercial activity, but I think, yeah, the flavor is definitely a little more subdued, and I think it's fine right now. I wouldn't worry about there being too much development, and if there was, I think it wouldn't be a bad fit. You know, it'd be like a lot of the residential streets right on the peninsula in Portland, sort of similar feeling of, you're one block off of Congress, and it's pleasant residential.
Okay, all right, any, so, do we want to just vote on this particular issue, or this is all one issue, right?
Yeah, I think let's keep talking about Article XI if the board wants to pull anything out, because you don't want to move it forward, then we can talk about that.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right, so we've got that change that, number two, it would be from Main Street to Maple Street.
Okay.
Seems like that's consensus there.
That's good.
Okay, great. So, most of the rest of the changes in Article XI are related to the housing bill. So, I'll just highlight a little bit of that. We've got some things in here that are related to the affordable housing density bonus that we talked about previously. And then, we've got some things that refer to the growth map that we just talked about. We have a, we had a typo in Section 23, the first of the space and bulk notes had an eight, and it was supposed to be a seven, so that was just something we fixed. And then, we also added some changes to Section 24, so the additional overlay district regulations. When you look at the two tables, we've eliminated those columns at the end that were the overlay districts and made just one column that says overlay districts with a note twenty-eight that refers you back to the overlay district descriptions. So, instead of having a column for each overlay district, because we're about to add another one, and we just wanted to make the column smaller instead of bigger on the table, we pulled what information was on these charts in those columns, which is pretty minor. A lot of it was really just only in the mobile home dimensional chart, and it was already in the language, so we're just trying to consolidate that. So, in Section 24, we've added a little bit of an index. Now that we've got seven districts, it seems like it was nice to have a list at the front. You'll see in number three, the mobile home park overlay, that there's some changes there, and actually, what happened was the language that we had didn't match the chart, the table. So, we had a mismatch currently, and so, we pulled the smaller of the two, so when we took the material off the table, it's now just going to be in this one location, and it's... so we had a mismatch currently, and so we pulled the smaller of the two, so when we took the material off the table, it's now just going to be in this one location, and it, and it's the smaller dimensions. And then, we added number seven, which is our new growth area overlay district, we've got a few things here, the statement of purpose to comply with the new law and so forth, and then really, it's all about allowing those vacant parcels to build up to four dwelling units, and then when you get later into Article 12, where we have our affordable housing density bonus section, it specifies that if you're in that district, that you can have that density bonus. So that's really from a note standpoint, what we've got, and then if we look at the two tables, the first one, which is the uses, you'll note those adjustments to the columns that I mentioned, where we're taking the overlay districts and consolidating, and then the main changes are highlighted on page two, where we've added under residential, that's where all the changes are happening. Because of the new law, we've combined single-family and two-family dwellings on one line, and we have a couple of notes there that, that relate to the new law. And then fourteen is the note that allows you to have the density bonus, so anywhere where you're doing residential development. The only other change we made on the final page to match the definitions, we've added the word homeless before shelters, because that's how our definition is written, so if you see shelters here, and you go look in the S for shelters, you won't find a definition, you have to go to homeless shelter. And then, we had note number two, is, is the one we just talked about, where it limits the, the development on the first story. So, I hope that's clear, I know it's a lot, if anyone has specific clarifying questions on that, we'd be happy to talk about that more. And then I can move to the dimensional chart, but maybe we want to just pause for a moment and see if anyone has any questions on the uses and the notes.
Anybody have any questions, comments? No? All right, move on.
Okay. So on the dimensional chart, the first thing I want to talk about, in addition, you'll notice just that we consolidated those overlay district columns, but we also made a change, staff was finding it a little confusing using this chart, where, for example, the first one, the minimum lot size with public sewer section, when you get to the very last row, it says other uses. And I think in the past, we'd use permitted other uses, but I think there was a little confusion with that, and we felt that if we moved it to the very top and said permitted uses unless otherwise noted below, because that's really the catch-all, is, you know, if it's not noted anywhere else, then it's that dimension, so we felt like putting it at the top was better. So consistently throughout this chart, a lot of what you're seeing highlighted for changes is literally that move, of moving in each of those sections, moving it from the bottom to the very first row. And then, related to that, you'll see, we've eliminated duplication, so, since we're saying that it's that dimension unless otherwise noted, we don't have to repeat that same dimension throughout, so we're just cleaning up the table. So those are a couple of cleanups that we've done, which look messy, but is not a big change really. So the primary changes then, to the actual dimensions on here, riverfront is really the number one change. So when we had done the Riverfront Island Master Plan update, and then when we met with city council in September, there was discussion about reducing the required minimum net lot area per dwelling unit from twelve hundred and fifty square feet to none, to allow it to have, you know, as much density as would be allowed based on height restrictions and impervious surface, which is consistent with Soundraville, so it's one change, and then, there was discussion about changing other dimensional standards. You'll see that staff is suggesting that we increase the impervious surface to eighty-five percent. I know at that meeting, there was talk about going greater than that, so that's up for discussion, whether you want to go with our recommendation or something different, and similarly, there was discussion about height, and whether to go higher than, than what's currently allowed, which is seventy-five feet. Staff actually talked quite a bit about that, at this point, we didn't suggest an increase. So, you know, some of our concern, and this may not be the concern of the board, was something like Summer Payne Park is not a really big piece of land, we didn't want to see ten, twelve-story buildings kind of towering around it. We did look, and I'm happy to pull up for you and do a little streetwalking, at some of the properties in the area, and we were really seeing five stories, maybe like six stories at the Continental Mill for part of it, so we were really seeing five stories, four stories, sometimes six, being a consistent height. We weren't seeing, you know, something that would really support a hundred, a hundred and twenty feet tall as a building, so if the desire is to go to that greater height, certainly that's something that can be suggested to the council, it would be a bit of a change based on what's currently there. So that, that was where we were, we were comfortable with, you know, we weren't comfortable with recommending something drastically different than the current settlement pattern.
Right, personally, I, I think that, you know, seventy-five feet is, you know, four, five, six stories max, because, you know, like you say, you don't want a ten-story building overpowering the other buildings in that area, so I think it, it needs to kind of meet the neighborhood, what's there and what's been there, so I think seventy-five is, you know, if somebody desperately wants to build a, you know, a ten-story, they can come and get, and then see if they can get a variance, or wouldn't that be what they would do?
Or a contract rezon.
Contract rezon, or, or whatever, you know, I think that would be the way to, to do it, leave it the way it is, and then if somebody is so desperate to build that big a building, then, you know, they can come and, and try to convince the, the different boards that they can.
The other thing, we, we discussed that, like, we have the design standards now as well, so, there's that whole context-sensitive language that's in there.
Right.
We were struggling with that, and we imagine the board would too, if somebody comes in with a twelve-story building, is that, how does that fit into the neighborhood there? What's, what's that discussion going to look like?
And I guess our concern was, is, is the context-sensitive design language sufficient for the board, let's say, to, to deny something based on that, if it was twelve stories? You know, it's, we weren't sure if it was, had enough teeth to it to really support the decision of a board, if, if you didn't want to see that height building.
They say, hey, there's no height requirement, or I can build twelve stories.
Right, right, yeah, let's, let's, I think, I think having the number in here is, is a good idea. Josh?
I just have, have a couple of questions with that. First and foremost, like, the, probably the tallest building down there is either the Marquette or the Dominican, am I correct on that?
They're about the same height, I think.
Dominican, yeah.
Okay, what's, what's the height on that?
They're four stories, as far as I know.
Four or five stories.
And then the professional building, that's thirteen or fourteen stories?
Uh, neither.
No? Do we have, what's our tallest building, I guess?
I want to say our tallest, well, if you don't recall.
If you include steeple.
Steeple, right.
Yeah.
If you include steeple, I almost think it's the heart center at CMMC.
Okay.
I'm not in the right place at all, am I?
My one, my one thought on all of this is that, when the infilling occurred in Portland, off of Commercial Street.
Keep going.
Yeah, keep going.
There were a lot of buildings that were built that were well above five or six stories.
One more, one more.
And so...
There you go, there's the...
That's the Dominican.
That's the Dominican block.
Since the majority of the land over here is already landbanked by the city, and there's, and there's like, just a lot of vacancy there, I would, I would...
Where do you want me to go?
I would...
Lewiston House Pizza. Sorry, Josh.
Discourage.
Keep going.
The seventy-five foot.
Bring it, keep going, yeah, a little more.
You know those two multifamilies that pop up near the Hilton?
No, 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 yeah, keep going, just keep going straight.
You're doing good, you're doing great.
Keep going, right, there it is, right there.
That guy.
That's five.
One, two, three, four, yeah, yeah. And that's...
And that's five stories, and that's probably...
Still about sixty-some odd feet, because it's not...
Maybe, because it's not, it's not new construction.
Right.
It's not lofty.
Exactly.
Right, right, okay.
So, I mean, if you figure, if it's, if it's twelve, if it's a ceiling height of twelve feet, which is high.
Right.
That's going to be six stories, so you're probably looking at seven-story buildings with, with what the requirement we have now.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to remember, Shelley, we asked Steve, the building inspector, what was the response to the wood construction? You could, with wood construction, you can go a lot higher now, right? Because it's...
Yeah, it was a thicker wood.
I mean, because one of the reasons the Hampton Inn, besides maybe, you know, but as a, as a study shows, but the height of that building was in part limited due to construction costs, because at the time, wood construction was less than metal construction, and that capped out, I think, at five stories, and if you wanted to go higher than that, then you had to do metal construction. Building codes changed now, so you can use, like, engineered wood, basically, and you can go, I don't know what the limit is now, but it's considerably higher, whether or not the economics work for it is something else, but the whole thought is it's a natural resource, you know, it regenerates and whatnot, so.
Right.
But that was part of the reason that height was established, it's where it's at. I mean, Josh raises an interesting point, I mean, you know, we do own a lot of land down there, hopefully we're going to do some marketing of that land here in the next calendar year, but do we want, you know, what is it that the city wants to see happen there? Are we looking for...
I wouldn't necessarily like, you know, die on this hill, but I do know that, you know, if we're, if we're thinking about rebuilding our downtown and making it a destination that, that people come to, and then also it has plenty of, of housing and, and other things of that nature, I do look at the developments that have happened in the past twenty years in surrounding communities, and the fact is that, like, you know, we're building residential housing six stories tall, you know what I mean? Like, that's, that's like a, that's a, that's a building in a, in a field, like in Lisbon, you know what I mean? Like, so, it's just...
Josh, what would you like to see as the height?
I, I would, I would probably like to see, you know, when I look at this, is there any zone that has, what's the highest height that we have in any zone? Is it Soundraville?
I think it's Soundraville.
Soundraville, yeah, and that's, it's one fifty, which is significantly greater than any other zone.
And it's basically adjacent to Soundraville, so, I don't know. I would split the difference, I guess.
I'll just throw out that too, I mean, the other change, I think Shelley mentioned, was we got rid of the density, because we know that's an issue.
Yeah.
So, I mean, with any of these projects, they're always looking for more units.
And we would always be able to contract zone?
Yeah, we, so...
You can, I mean, we don't, I mean, we don't love contract zones, they're a good tool, there, there's a, there's a time and a place for them, but, you know, if we can avoid that too, that's what we look, this is an opportunity.
I would, I would prefer that it would stay close to what Soundraville is. Do you mind my opinion?
Yeah, but I don't think we want to go a hundred and fifty feet.
I'm comfortable with a hundred.
I, you know...
Splitting the difference, as you say.
Yeah, yeah.
I would be comfortable with a hundred.
I would, you know, I would, I, I'll compromise, Alex has some comments.
Well, I was just going to say really quick, we, when we, what I'm remembering, when we talked about this a couple meetings back, it came up that, like, most buildings, it's economically unfeasible to go above like five or six stories, because like, elevator, sprinkler, you need like a helipad on the roof, you know, there's, just all this stuff, so like, yeah, we, we'll set a number, but like, I, I would love to have the problem of us getting that number.
It'll be, it'll be the market that is going to generate what, how high it goes, so if, you know, if we put a max number of a hundred feet, and, and the market doesn't support it, then they're going to put seventy-five, or sixty, or whatever, so.
Yep.
It is, so, let me, Roger, would you go with one hundred?
I don't know, I'd probably more stay with seventy-five.
Michael?
I'm still wondering, what's the height of the professional building? It's like seven stories, I believe.
It's one thirty-three.
Yeah.
Well, measured from the front to the back.
That's the question!
You got a whole extra story.
Well, yeah, you could probably build something down at Payne Park, and build it two stories higher, before you even talk of the professional building, because there's a gradient going up.
I think the other part that we do have to discuss too, is just the...
Yeah, the one south of that.
The what?
Yeah, that's it right there.
The street parole. Because it's, eighty-five percent is the proposal, I think it really depends on like what gets developed there.
Yeah, I think they did that based on our recommendation and discussion from last time.
Yeah.
Because it's for permitted uses, so somebody could make a case for a hundred percent.
So that's seven stories?
At street level.
At, at street level, well, yeah, that, that's the, the one that, that counts, so, seven stories is what, a hundred feet?
Well, it doesn't, yeah.
And it all depends on the first two levels, if there's higher ceilings.
Right, right.
Then, then you get like the basement to the back.
Well, yeah, but that, like I said, we, we got to count just the first, so, so what's the consensus?
I'd, I'd say yes to the hundred.
You'd say yes to a hundred, you'll say yes to a hundred.
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay, so, you know, Roger, you're the only one that, you're the only holdout. Yes to a hundred?
And that's okay.
That's okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
That's okay, but, I mean, you can still hold out, and the majority says a hundred, so let's change it to a hundred?
I also think that the majority will actually pick seventy-five, and we will be in a wonderful scenario if somebody is testing our hundred.
Okay, so, at this...
Is there anything else related to the riverfront, the eighty-five percent impervious, is that okay, is going down to zero for the, you know, like, unlimited dwellings per acre? Okay.
Honestly, I don't think that, for me personally, like, that, that I'm going to argue over eighty-five versus something else.
Okay.
Let's see, let's see what the proposals are that come in.
Right, and, 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 yeah, okay.
They could always build up.
Agreed.
Yeah, yeah, you can build up.
Well, there's some truth to that.
Yeah, I know.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's the whole point of this, right? We're incentivizing a particular type of...
Okay, all right, so, I'll entertain a motion for Article 11?
I'll take a stab at it, but before I get into it, I think Shelley asked a really clear question, and I think there was consensus that we're okay with the impervious.
Yeah, eighty-five.
Okay, yeah, cool.
Sorry.
Nope, you're good. All right, so, I'd like to make a motion pursuant to Article Seven, Section Four, and Article Seventeen, Section Five, of the Zoning and Land Use Code, to send a favorable recommendation to the city council for amendments to Appendix A, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Eleven, District Regulations, that reflects two changes, one in the land use table notes, number two, two, two-two, that the word cedar is changed to maple, and, second, that the change discussed on the space and bulk table referencing the riverfront district's maximum height be amended to reflect a hundred feet.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Nadeen?
Yes.
Michael Marquette?
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson?
Yes.
At six to one, Michael objecting. All right, Article Twelve.
Okay. You should say that, so people know that's what you, what your, your knows are about, I think that's helpful, for state government to hear.
Okay. Onward and outward.
Can I summarize? Because I didn't...
Okay, I, I'll let you guys discuss, I have to go.
Great, as vice chair, I'm going to take this moment. Thank you.
Can I do it, so you don't...
Please, I really, no, I think it's really important that Board Member Marquette is able to share why he has voted no on the last couple of ones, and it is less about our content and more around the intention of why we're making changes.
Correct, and speaking, and speaking about content, all of the little adjustments that happened, I agreed to, so I knew that when I voted no, that would probably create some confusion, because I agreed to the specifics, but not the overall, and when I look at particularly D, being space and bulk requirements, which is what LD 2003 is all about, and I don't like LD 2003, period. I'm not even sure why I voted yes on definitions, probably just because I was getting warmed up, and, and then looking at the official maps in the districts, and some of the parcels that were involved, I didn't like, and when we get to number, or... When we get to number, or letter F, Neighborhood Business District, I think I even voted against that as a, a, I've got my mind stuck in the word district, a zone, the Neighborhood Business Zone. We went from OR to NB, if I remember right. I believe I voted against that for various reasons. And whenever I see that pop up embedded in this language, it's another reason to vote for something in an overall perspective, even if some of the components are agreeable.
Thank you for placing that on the record. Does anyone else need a short break while the chair is gone, or should I progress? Onward, okay. Then, next, we'd take up Article twelve, Performance Standards, Shelley?
Okay. The first two sections of changes, Section sixteen signs and Section nineteen, environmental performance standards, are both cleanup from past changes to either the elimination of a zoning district or the renaming of a zoning district. Stuff in Section sixteen signs is all fairly recent, that is probably familiar to you. In Section nineteen, when we went back and were doing cleanup, we found some things that were changed a number of years ago that had not been corrected. So, that's correcting some things far from the past and more recent. We also made some changes in the sound level table, just to make it read better or just be clearer for staff and the public, because we've had some questions. And we wanted to make it clear that all zoning districts fall into one of those three categories. There's no zoning districts where there's no sound limitations. So, we just tried to provide better, clearer language. And then, the last thing is the addition of Section twenty-three, which is the Affordable Housing Density Bonus section that's required by the state law. And that's written pretty close to exactly what the state had with some things that are specific for how Lewiston is set up, so.
Okay.
And for what it's worth, I sent a text to Lincoln, and he responded that median income is forty-eight thousand, sixty-nine dollars.
Is that median, or is that eighty percent of median?
He was saying that that was median. He also noted that there are different income levels based upon household size that would need to be looked at a little more closely.
So, it's forty-eight dollars?
Forty-eight.
Okay.
Individual or per house, housing?
Per household.
Per household, that's what I meant.
Right, okay. So, eighty percent of that, whatever, anyways, okay. Okay, any discussion on Article twelve?
I, yep, Shannon? I just have one quick question.
Sure.
And it's specifically in the area of Section twenty-three. It names density bonus, and I'm pretty sure that the density bonus ties back to the state section. But I don't know that I see that in number three. And is it helpful for some of the reasons that have been described here to tie this back to the state law?
So, this language is from the state's rules for the implementation of LD two thousand and three. So, we're required to provide this density bonus anywhere where we have a designated growth area or also where there's water and sewer available. Does that answer the question? I'm not sure I fully understand.
It doesn't, but it helps reaffirm. I guess you're using this language as required by law to include this language, but you haven't referenced that law in the additional language. And I wonder if, A, that makes sense so that our descendants understand the connection of these changes? And, B, if it behooves us to tie it to the law so that changes in the law don't require changes in our votes and language? And that's just kind of making it evergreen. And I don't know if that's a useful thing to think about, or we can let our children do it decades from now, whatever.
So, you're basically proposing, like, in accordance with state law, blah, 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 blah.
I mean, the whole section could get that, yeah.
MRSA, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, yeah, we, we.
Yeah. Perhaps in the, in the beginning.
Density bonus shall be awarded under the following conditions.
Right, you know.
Aided.
I mean, you referenced it in one of the other definitions that we saw earlier. I just don't know if it's, it truly, if it is useful. If it is not useful, then great, looks wonderful.
So, Steph is thinking the bottom of the last page, we have the reasons for the ordinance changes, the second bullet, to provide greater housing opportunities and come into compliance with Title thirty A, MRSA, Section forty-three, sixty-four.
Yep.
We could start that at the beginning of Section twenty-three.
Right.
And then, after that, say, certain affordable, you know.
Right, yeah. Make that the first line. Okay, yeah, I think that's, that's perfect. Yeah, I think that's very good. Okay, anybody else? Michael?
So, this language is listed in a written code somewhere, right? Obviously.
This one.
So, in, in the Title thirty A, it requires that there be a density bonus two and a half times. The DECD wrote rules that are pretty much locked up.
Yeah, I understand that, maybe I just didn't formulate my intro to a place where I want to get to. So, the reason for ordinance changes, will those two bulleted items appear in the code?
No.
No.
Well, the second one will now, because we're going to add.
Because you're going to add it.
Because we're going to add it.
Well, I was just wondering, because if all of these reasons at the bottom of each one of these articles are in the code, then there would be no need to bring it up forward.
Right, no, it's not.
But it's not.
It's not. So, that's, that's why Shannon brought that up. So, to provide that whole sentence, the second sentence, is going to be put.
To be a devil's advocate, what happens if a future legislature just basically abolishes LD two thousand and three?
Well, then, then all of this.
As to whether we want.
Does that change our code, or we would have to go back and change?
We'd have to go back and change it if we wanted to.
And to Shannon's point, we can't necessarily, we've had varying opinions on this as far as when we reference state language, so we don't have to revisit it again.
Yeah.
Technically, you're supposed to revisit it again, because you folks are supposed to have made, in the council, are supposed to have made a finding specific to that language. So, if all of a sudden, take automobile graveyards. All of a sudden, they say, you know, it's five cars instead of three cars. The municipal governor and authority is supposed to be aware of that change, even though it's state law, and even though you really can't say otherwise, you're supposed to take action upon it.
Okay, so, we really don't need that, that to provide blah, blah, blah. But it wouldn't hurt, but it wouldn't hurt, okay.
To Shannon's point, why are we doing this?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to put it in, and we're going to have to revisit it anyways if it changes, so it's not a big deal.
As Shelley said, we're kind of doing the minimum right now, because we expect things are going to evolve as this ordinance gets used.
Absolutely, absolutely. As the ordinance is used and it doesn't work, or whatever, then, you know, the state will make some changes. Alex?
Just to that note, if we could get in the habit of whenever we have proposed changes that are linked to state law, doing what we just discussed.
Right, put that in, yeah, that reference.
Our thing.
Sure, sure. In an effort to show that we're a business and development-friendly community that is putting restrictions and things in.
Yeah, based on requirements.
Because we have to. It's a nice preamble.
Sure, sure. Okay, any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion. Who wants to make a motion?
Happy to. I'd like to make a motion pursuant to Article seven, Section four, and Article seventeen, Section five of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the city council for amendments to Appendix A, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article twelve, Performance Standards, reflecting the amendment made by discussion where the sentence to provide greater housing opportunities and come into compliance with yada, yada, is included underneath the Section twenty-three Affordable Housing densities header.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Najin?
Yes.
Michael Markott?
No.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin?
Yes.
Passes six to one, with Michael's standard objection. Okay, Article thirteen.
Okay. Article thirteen is a little bit of a cleanup from past changes to the OR district, which was renamed Neighborhood Business, and we had missed that here. So, it's just some simple language changes.
Okay. Any comments? You may, Shannon?
I'm going to pull Lucy. If you look at the fourth line up from the bottom paragraph, the line starts with department and/or, and I think you have a weird gap there that you just go on catch in the formatting process.
Yeah.
Lewiston's Engineering, enter department.
I didn't notice that.
I really, look at me go, thank you.
You got it, good girl, good shot.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else have any other comments or questions, and I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Pursuant to Article seven, Section four, and Article seventeen, Section five of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the city council for amendments to Appendix A, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article thirteen, Development Review.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, all right, so, Amy. And further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yep.
Joshua Najin?
Yes.
Michael Markott?
No.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin?
Yes.
Six to one, Michael's standard objection.
He did give an explanation while you were.
Yeah, well, I know that, that's why I'm saying it that way, because I missed that part. I apologize, Michael, but I really, you know, when you got to, you got to go, you got to go. Okay.
I just like the definitions limiting junkyards and lots of.
Oh, okay. All right, reading of the minute, a motion to adopt the October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three draft minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Najin?
Yes.
Michael Markott?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin, seven to nothing. All right, any other?